You have the agenda before you. Item number two is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions? Counselor, press your button. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, I'd like to have added to the agenda the calming signs and waste receptacles.
Ooh, you want to call that 11 and 12? Calming, yeah, I know what you mean.
What calming?
It's the speed sign.
Speed signs, yeah.
And waste, you said?
Yes.
I'm calling these cans, and they're both under Lauren. Okay, is there anything else? Hearing done, we will move on. Item number three, declaration of any conflict of interest. Does anybody, the Counselor, like you? Item number four is presentations. Department head, Mark Blin, manager of Innovation and Enterprise, 10:10. Ooh, we're three minutes late. You have the floor. You can turn your mic on there. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Good morning. So I'm supposed to be super brief. That's good, fits in well with my plans. So what we've been doing, our department has been doing over the last 12 months or so, I've jotted some stuff down. It's not an exhaustive list, but some of the more pertinent files that we're working on. So rural internet, first and foremost. 2017, this was one of our initiatives that we were tracking at the Rural Broadband Initiative. We attended some information sessions, some private meetings with some shareholders in southwest Nova Scotia region. We tried to attempt to create a municipal agreement with about, I think it was about six or nine other municipalities to own a fiber backbone network. That failed when one of the municipalities pulled out, and since then, we partnered with the REN and six other municipalities to apply for CTI funding. I think most of you are aware of this. We haven't received an official federal government response yet, but we do believe that we will be denied. We think probably that the ask of 17 million was a tad too much, and we were missing a private sector partner. Recently, however, it was announced that funding would be given to extend the backbone in Sanford, Central Shebogue, and Gableton, and also North Range, to the tune of $5.4 million. Once that gets extended out, perhaps maybe then we can go to Eastlink or whoever the carrier might be, and then ask them if we might be able to partner with them to help extend out even further those areas of rural internet. Out in Forest Glen, as you know, we've completed the tower. It's up. We just have to put a fence around it and then upgrade the road a little bit to our liking. We've got 34 subscribers so far, and we are in the process of growing out the network. We're trying various technologies to do this. We've used TV white space, which is a technology that uses the old wavelengths that were used for your TVs way back when with the rabbit ears and such. So we've got one unit out there, and there's two clients that are on it already. They're behind a hill. That's what's good about this technology, is it actually goes over some hills, not huge, massive hills, but, you know, your smaller ones. And also, out in Forest Glen, thank goodness, I've made some inroads in with TIR. They have a communication tower. They actually have 61 communication towers in Nova Scotia, and 29 of those towers have ISPs on them, Internet service providers, so they've been leased out. So I've been trying to get ahold of the folks at TIR, saying, "We want to be on your tower out in East Kemp, Bill." And finally, I've got, I'm in touch with the people that we need to be in touch with to make that happen. The downside there is, for the structural engineering and technical engineering aspect of it, it might be at least $15,000 just to see if we can put our equipment on their tower. But anyway, we're going through that process without obviously committing to the funds just yet, and we'll see where that takes us. The thing about the East Kemp Tower is that just about everybody on the 340 can see it, and if you can see it, then we can get internet from it, once we beam to it. We're also looking a little bit at cell booster technology to perhaps maybe put on our tower out in Forest Glen. We're waiting on some technology that's down in the States. It's not blessed by the CTRC here yet, but we're hoping it will be. And obviously, I do field calls on a weekly basis, people asking, you know, where we're at, how can we get internet, rural internet down at our location? So asset management, there, I've provided some information to the REN about our asset inventory. The thought is to be investment-ready and to be able to provide foreign direct investors with the pertinent information that they need, so that's why you would have an asset management system that details everything that we have. And then the business directory as well, again, for foreign direct investment, but also for folks in our municipality as well. We've got over 200 businesses in our municipality. I've collated, got their contact information. I sent that off to the REN. They massaged it and preened it, and are putting it in their business directory. I've taken it back, and we're actually creating our own directory in-house as well with Mike Sorette and Steve. And then the next step would be to put the North American Industry Classification System codes in there, or the NOCC codes, whichever we do. NOCC code is the National Occupational Classification, so we try to tie those to our business as well. So the thought there is, you go to our ARC system, and you click on a property, and then it would pop up whether it was a commercial or not, and if so, it would tell you what type of a business it was. So that would be another layer that's added to our GIS-type system. Agriculture Day was a success. We had Terry, who is our Department of Agriculture head here in our region, he said he's had over 12 people approaching him as a direct result of the Agriculture Day that we held at the Rod Grant Hotel, and he said those are folks that are looking to start out into agriculture. So, yeah, by all measures, it was a success. I am going to pass around the evaluation form results to you folks, and you can take a look at it. And I have all of this electronic as well, if you'd like an electronic, but I will leave that here with you guys. And then, I just wanted to report on the climate data study. We pushed for the continuance of this, but sadly, due to funding constraints, the data will not be displayed real time anymore. So those six stations that we have here, they are still collecting data, but someone has to come out and manually pull that data off and then populate their database in Lawrence Town, or wherever it may be, and then you could make a request if you wanted to know what the weather was out at a particular station. You make a request to them, and they let you know, and away you go. So it's not real time like it used to be on the website, but at least it's still getting collected, so fingers crossed they'll continue to do that. Efforts at the Hebrun Business Park, it's been slow, but we have to be diligent in what we do and make sure we're spending our money properly. So following some of the recommendations in the business expansion plan that my department created in 2016, we've fabricated the banner signs, so that's going to house, I think it's going to be eight businesses. You'll see them. The sign is 10 feet tall, four feet wide. So that's done, and we put in the foundation, the footings, so we need to let that cement cure for another two weeks, and then we'll prop the sign up and we'll put the sign. We're getting quotes on a sign for the entrance park. I don't think everyone has seen the concept. It's a concept, and if there's something better out there, great. It's, you know, if nothing else, it'll spark some conversation around what a sign should look like. I'll show that to you guys. I meant to bring it up, and I forgot, but I'll get it to you guys so you can see it. And the RFP has been published to get the clearing of the woodlots done. I forget how many acres we're looking at, but I think it's roughly 10 or 12 or so. And the initial survey work has been done to plot out the new road. So, yeah, it's going forward. I'd like things to go quicker, obviously, but as I said, we have to be diligent in what we're doing and make sure we're doing it right, because we're obviously dealing with taxpayers' money. So I belong to Economic Developers Network of Nova Scotia. This year, I've attended one of the meeting, one of three. I had two conflicts with the others. This group provides me with a form to ask my fellow colleagues what they are doing and ask them about some of their best practices. I find it invaluable, so I do attend those when I can, and it's a good thing to attend. Some other events that I have attended in the last 12 months, the divert, I was actually with our warden. We went there to meet with some folks, and a lot of this is networking that takes place. There was an airport brainstorming session that I attended and provided some feedback. Executive Roundtable around the Smart City that was down in Kentville, Low Carbon Challenge, a lot of funding opportunities there. They gave us a lot of information. I have it down in my office, so anything that's low carbon, there's a lot of funding out there, and this conference highlighted that. Smart Energy Conference as well, several luncheon learns, Intellectual Property was one that stuck with me, which is good. Ag Day Conferences, Business Data Conference, UNSM Conference, I actually spoke to our efforts out in Forest Glen on that, with the rural internet. Then there was the Sino-Canadian Conference, that was Economic Development, sorry, Export Development Canada, had some doings with that. The REN Summit, and then Yarmouth Area Chamber of Commerce, I've attended a couple of their sessions as well. In the offshore petroleum summits, I've attended those. The airport there, it's a file, the airport file is something that I monitor at arm's length, depending on what's happening. I last attended the brainstorming session in Halifax. We follow up on a lead, but it's looking less likely that it will pan out. It had to do with drones. We're still following up on it, but it doesn't, you need restricted airspace, and that's kind of a challenge out our way. We did a little, minor help with the film. We helped the location manager to persuade the directors and crew to come film here, and before this, we ensured the location manager that it was going to be easy to work here and that we'd be able to deliver on what we promised. So that worked out, so that was great, and it was just a small little part that we did, but every little bit helps, I guess. Small Passenger Ship, we've attended meetings and provided input for almost two years now. We helped develop the strategy to encourage the smaller cruise ships and helped in planning the welcome of the MV Fram. The result is four more trips from the MV Fram, so we're hoping to capitalize on that and keep this going, because the more folks we can get in here, the better off it is. Dark Skies, we're a member of that, of the committee. We're looking to preserve our UNESCO Dark Skies designation, and we're also looking to help combat light pollution as well. Blue Flag is something that we just looked into. The Foundation for the Environmental Education owns the Blue Flag trademark. Loosely stated, FEE's goal is to educate to protect, to protect not only our environment but the people who live in and the communities who depend on it, the businesses who profit from it, and the ecosystems which rely on it. So it's a designation that you would give to beaches, harbors, and you would test the water quality, you would have environmental education, usually it's in the form of signs, if you will, placards, and then there's environmental management and safety and services. You'd need a lifeguard, you'd need washroom facilities and such, and when you have that, you get this Blue Flag designation, and it's very well-known in Europe. There's none in the USA. There's about three or four that are on the border in Canada, close to the USA, and there's one in Dartmouth, and I apologize, I think it was like Birch Lake it's called, but I forget. There's only one in Nova Scotia. So we're kind of looking into this designation. Now, obviously, there would be some costs associated with that, with the testing of the water quality and making sure that there are the facilities and such, but with this one initiative, we can cross into the five areas of municipal interest/commitment. We would be committed, we'd be working on the environment, resident safety, recreation, tourism, and economic development. So this is one of those things that perhaps could have a pretty good payoff in the end. So we're looking into it. We're trying to get some numbers around what the economic spinoff would be of a beach that, say, wasn't Blue Flag designated and then actually became one, but they're all over Europe. The other thing, too, with tourism is, if we're trying to get tourists from Europe, they're very familiar with this Blue Flag, and I'm sure if they came here and they saw that, they'd feel much more at ease and say, hey, this is the place to be, right? We're looking at brownfields. We've got 21 PIDs of interest, which is not to say that these 21 PIDs are brownfields, but one area of interest might have three or four different PIDs associated with it. We're in preliminary consultations with an engineering firm familiar with this sort of demanding project. They're giving me guidance and direction on this, and we're just looking to perhaps maybe regain some of this commercially viable land that we can't use because it's a brownfield site. And again, this is another area where you would be helping out the environment, resident safety, and economic development as well.
Deputy Ward, before you, do you have much more?
No, no.
Because we do have another presentation. We could bring you back at our next committee of the.
No, I just wanted to say, website, 65, 70% done, shooting for a launch in September. That's it.
Okay. Is there any questions you want to ask, Mar?
Yeah, sorry for that shotgun approach, but.
Thank you, Mar. The internet there, you mentioned you go to Howard, and he's going to get some more coverage, that $15,000. If that will work, I would 100% support that 100%.
Yep.
Because now they've got Extranet, that everybody's getting a letter, that I think you get the speed, that after you go over a certain data.
It's cat.
Yeah. Then it comes to you.
Yep.
The other thing with climate data, is that the program that Chris.
Yes.
That we had, so his program is scratched?
No, it's not scratched. So CBDC started it in conjunction with a couple other organizations, thank you. But it was always CBDC's intention just to kickstart it and then move it off, which they did, and the Department of Agriculture took it over. So we have six sites here in our municipality. I think there's a couple in Argyle, and there's 20, 30-odd sites up and down southwest Nova. But a big expense to this was the cell that it cost, because they were transmitting constantly, and that was the big cost there, so they cut that out. So now they're just going around and they're collecting it manually. Yeah. And it used to be a real-time website. You go on and you click Y1, which is down here in, down in, what's that called where Churchill is? Sorry. Overton, thank you. I think it's around there. You know, you go and you click, and you see what the weather was like that exact moment. Well, three-second delay, yeah.
And the other thing about the industrial park, you know, I've always said that we should have an exit for the industrial park. I was talking to Kim McAlpin. They've got a bridge that's going across there, right next to it, on the 101. It's for the ATVs and walk and trail. $1.5 million.
Yep.
To put that.
Yep.
And we can't get an exit to the industrial park. Thank you.
Deputy Ward?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mark, I said that I was going to come down and visit you last week, and unfortunately, my hands are tied. One of the questions I was going to mention to, or ask you at the time was Municipal of Argyle in regards to the possible funding relationship. Have you been in contact with them?
A little bit, yes.
Hopefully, that could work out to kill two birds with one stone, because that area also is depressed in regards to internet service as well, and people from Municipal of Argyle, which is East Kemp, which I still consider people that I service, they had mentioned that they would also like to be on there. I said, well, talk to your counselor, Danny Muse, and maybe we can work something out in some sort of cost-sharing thing, because I think this is something that people have it, love it, and I think this is something that I think could easily be expanded on, that's for sure.
So, yeah, so when I was speaking at the UNSM about our efforts at Forest Glen, Danny Muse actually got up and asked me a couple questions, and I told him point-blank, again, can't speak for council, but yes, we would definitely like to partner with you. We would like to beam out the internet your way, because we want our ISP to get as many subscribers as he can, because then he's going to flourish and then we will expand out. And I've talked to him since about on two or three occasions again with this in mind, saying, look, we're looking at East Kemp, and we're not just looking to put up the telecommunications beaming our way. I mean, it would make sense, it would behoove us as neighbors to beam it out your way as well. He seemed okay with that, yeah.
Councilor, we're reaching here, don't you? Oh, go to the dashboard, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, I didn't notice. Mark, thank you for the presentation. Just as far as Hebrun, Dayton, and some of the other more built-up business areas in the municipality, I'm thinking the Arcadia stretch and some others. Maybe I've neglected a couple, but in any event, we do have a lot of businesses in those areas. You mentioned the numbers, and I'd like to see, you know, in the fairly near term, you come to council with the means, along with the CAO, to engage those businesses, because I think that's been a weakness for us, and to actually see what their thoughts are in terms of infrastructure, legislation, all these types of things that would help them grow. I know Hebrun, Dayton the best, it's busy, signage, all those things. I think we've really not done enough in that area.
I'd agree, yeah.
And that's the business retention and promotion piece. We've got hotels, we've got all these pieces, you know, very busy grocery providers, you know, professional, you know, tax preparers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in any event, I think we do need to focus on the businesses that are in our jurisdiction and are paying taxes and hear from them and, you know, have a way forward, you know, within the next year, I would say. We'd want to have that done, and that gives us a pretty big envelope of time to do something in a positive direction for them. So those would be my comments, and I know we're time-constrained, so I'll leave it at that.
No, duly noted. I concur, yeah.
Counselor, question, I need.
I think I was being neglected on purpose, because some counselors think I'm long-winded.
Actually, I have three questions, and I just want short answers to them, I guess, Mark. You talk about the drones, the restricted airspace. Why are we restricted airspace here in Yarmouth?
Because you're next to the town, to be quite honest with you. So you would, to have a non-light-of-sight testing facility for drones, you would need someplace that's really remote. So we've got a lot of infrastructure at the airport that might lend itself well to that, but we don't, we're not in the middle of nowhere, unfortunate, well, fortunately, I guess, but.
Yeah.
So they could perhaps be flown out to sea and then have some restricted airspace there, and that's kind of what we're looking at. So you would look at a drone that has the bottom of a hull of a boat, right, that could perhaps land on water. So we explored that. It's very regulated, it's huge, it's a massive undertaking, but, you know, we have to chase every lead, right?
Yeah. So is it possible to work with a lot of local governments to try to get permission to do something like that, or is it regulated by the federal government?
Yeah, it's federal for the most part, and I'm sure there's some provincial regulation as well, but it's federal for the most part. And there's only two places in Canada that do non-light-of-sight testing for drones. And again, some of these things, some of these concepts are just kind of like, you kind of, just kind of pops into your mind, and you think about it, and you see how far you can run with it. I don't know how far we can run with this one, but it's something that we have to keep, you know, not in the immediate radar, but maybe off to the periphery and kind of pick at it.
Do we talk with federal government or provincial government?
Yeah, I've talked to some folks Beckwith, I forget his first name, and this is what he does. He's the guy.
Is there anything we can do with our local MLA and MPEs?
Not just yet. We need to know that we've got the basics down, which is an area that we could restrict flights and such, so, yeah.
Second question is, you talk about the Blue Flags. I think we talked about this before. So I'm assuming that John's Cove Beach would be a perfect place to try to designate as a Blue Flag, once we get some.
Yep.
Washrooms and changing rooms.
Right.
And whatnot, so.
Yeah, so you need the washrooms. If you don't have them, forget it. It's not going to happen. It needs the washrooms, yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue on that venture, which.
Yeah.
I'll be looking into during your future.
Yep.
I may have lost, on the third question, I may have lost the definition of a brownfield, you call it?
Oh, yeah, so a lot of times, it's old abandoned gas stations, you know, right? So, yeah, there could be some environmental issues. You don't really want to stir up the dirt, but sometimes you do, and you see that there are some issues, so.
But don't they do some type of enzyme now, that they drill holes in the ground?
Hey, technology, it's going like this, right? So, yeah, I'm sure there is.
Because there's two places in town there, where Carter's, that's where it used to be, the SOBOK plant.
Yep.
They have that. Okay.
Well, FCM has some funding for Brownfield, so we would hopefully partner with FCM, private company, and.
So we have some locations in our area that could.
Couple.
Tap into.
But we don't own them. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. No, we don't own them at all, yeah.
Okay. Good, that's it, thank you.
This is all preliminary.
Counselor.
Yes, Mar. I spoke to you at the UNSM after. You mentioned the fact that they were trying to, the ISP was trying to get up at the airport.
Yeah.
You were looking at maybe trying to beam out towards Pickney's Point Way.
Indeed.
Internet. I'm just wondering what the progress was. Have you had any progress in that respect?
Yeah, so we gave our plans to the town. They were very helpful, and they, the thing about, it's a water tower out at the airport. I believe Bell is there, and Bell has the right to review anyone else that wants to go on there to make sure it doesn't, you know, crosstalk with their stuff, their telecommunications out there. So that's been submitted to Bell, and I talked to Jeff, I emailed Jeff Guxu, I think, about two days ago, and he said he's going to re-ping Bell, because they hadn't gotten back to him yet. But they definitely sent it off to Bell, so we're kind of waiting on them.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, we're following up on it for sure, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Seeing that there's no other counselors have any further questions, Mark, I want to thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Your time and effort and so on. There's still a lot of work ahead for you and so on.
Yes.
The biggest thing, if you noticed here, was on the internet, it's a very important issue and so on, but there's also a lot of other things that are important to the municipality and so on, so I'm not asking you to put all your efforts into the internet. It is an important thing. I'm very disappointed on the REN's effort and so on, that that didn't come through for us and so on in that respect, but what is, is, just keep doing your due diligence and so on, and doing the things that you do. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
4.2 is Westford. Marcus Zwigger, general manager. I'm going to ask the deputy warden if he'll take the chair for a moment. No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. I've got to step out.
All right, thank you very much. I guess you can continue.
I'll try not to call, this is on, I'll try not to call you, Warden Leland.
Well, that's all right. I've been called worse.
I only got about, I guess, 10 minutes here today, but this is a pretty, can be, take longer for one. Can be a pretty in-depth topic that I'm here to talk to you about today, and the reason, I guess I am here, is the business that I work for fielded quite a few requests from a lot of the municipalities in western Nova Scotia to come talk to them and try and explain or answer questions that they had about Crownland Forest Management and Westford in particular. So after we did six or seven, there were six or seven requests made, we did presentations, some of them were quite in-depth, two, three, four hours long, they had lots of questions. We decided to write a letter out to the remaining municipalities to see if they were interested in hearing the same talk and be given the same opportunity. So that's why I'm here today. So we'll just get started. What Westford is, or currently is, we're a forest management company that's owned by 13 mills in western Nova Scotia, all right? So if, the concept came from a per-buyback of purchase of about 860,000 acres of land from four to five forest companies in the downturn of the forest industry between 2008 and 2012, accumulating with the purchase of about three-quarters of that from the Bowwater Mersey. These mills, originally there were 16 potential mills that could be partners in the business that had either long-term historical. 13 mills in Western Nova Scotia, all right? So if the concept came from a per buyback of purchase of about 860,000 acres of land from four to five forest companies in the downturn of the forest industry between 2008 and 2012, accumulating with the purchase of about three quarters of that from the Bowwater Mersey. These mills, originally there were 16 potential mills that could be partners in the business that had either long-term historical crown timber license allocations dating back to the early 60s or received the majority of their fiber supply or their wood supply from these lands. At the time, three of the 16 mills decided that they were going to forego their opportunity for Crown Wood Fiber or Crown Wood Supply and not be part of the business and 13 stayed on and formed a company to take over the operating responsibilities that they currently had under the old arrangement and still maintain their wood supply. So on the slide there, you can see them, some they range from Digby County all the way up to Victor County and they're predominantly the major operators of forestry processing facilities and really based in the counties west of there. Each one of them has a timber license and a timber volume they're allowed to receive from Crownland every year. It varies widely depending on what you historically receive from the land base. So typically roughly what you receive from the land base in terms of your wood supply is sort of the amount of the allocation that was granted to each one of these mills, okay? So I put a map up there and that's really Crownland in Yarmouth County, so that's land, that's publicly held land. The yellow, the solid yellow you see on the map is lands that Westfor we would operate on, okay? You can trade glasses too, I guess. The yellow hash line you see there is Parks and Protected Area. So at the same time, the province of Nova Scotia come up with a, right around the same 2012 to 2014 guideline, they had a target to reach 13% of the provincial land in protected areas, okay? So they designated, along with the purchase of Bowwater, they've designated in Western Nova Scotia, approximately 40% of the publicly owned land in Western Nova Scotia now is designated Parks and Protected and primarily either through wilderness areas, parks, or strictly designated no motorized access, no development, no forestry activities can occur. So that's in Yarmouth, about 40, just under 40% of the forested land, of the Crownland in Yarmouth County is in Parks and Protected and you can see it there on the map. I'd just like to outline sort of where we would potentially operate. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
On your map there?
Yes.
Is the Tobyattic Reserve highlighted there anywhere?
The, yes, part of the Tobyattic, you see the, sort of the hash line yellow, that side of that, the very point at the end of Yarmouth County would be in the wilderness area, which would be in the Parks and Protected.
Right on the Yarmouth and Digby, Yarmouth and.
Shelburne County.
Shelburne County lines?
Yep. So the peninsula of that is the Tobyattic, yes.
So are we, are you looking at, in the Shelburne County also, or we're just talking about the Yarmouth County area?
Here, we're just talking about Yarmouth County in particular, but we do, and I'll show a map later, about where the publicly owned land in Western Nova Scotia, where we would operate, where it's designated for the different licensees and where the Parks and Protected area are. But just in this map, I only show on Yarmouth County.
Okay, thank you.
So currently, what Westfor does, we've been in business since January 1st, 2016, two and a half years of operations. We are working today under a short-term timber license, waiting for Professor Leahy to finish, complete his forestry report on forest practices in Nova Scotia. So during that timeframe, he's been doing it for almost a year now, the government has stated that there will be not signing any more long-term license agreements similar to the rest of the province. So all the other licensees, like myself, the Midway Community Forest Co-op, the First Nations Forestry Initiatives, Northern Pulp, anybody outside of Port Hoxton Papers, we're sort of in a short-term licensing pattern depending on what the outcome or some of the recommendations of his report. So currently, what we do is we build short-term operating plans, so from six months to a year. We coordinate the harvesting, the silviculture, the road building on lands that we operate on, as well as we comply with DNR's third-party, or Operating Procedures Regulation and they maintain a third-party Sustainable Forestry Initiative certification on a portion of the lands that Bowwater had maintained as well. So that's a big part of what we do. And then at the same time, we have to manage where the wood goes and when it's harvested to meet all the different mills' requirements. Go ahead.
When you're talking about your regulation and third-party certification, what do you classify as third-party?
So in Canada.
Private individual?
There are hired auditors, all right?
For me?
Hired auditors.
Okay.
So in Canada, or in, I guess in the world, there's two main certification bodies that come basically out and they audit forest operations to a certain standard, to say that they're sustainable, we're complying with environmental regulation, we're engaging with stakeholders. The one that, the two that are pretty dominant in Canada are called SFI, Sustainable Forest Initiative, and FSC, which is Forest Sustainability Council, all right? What the third-party certification that is maintained in the land base we operate on is through SFI and Bowwater had that same certification when they owned a portion of the land base. And so once, well, there's a bunch of standards you have to comply with them, once a year, an audit team comes out from that organization and spends a week on your land base and reviews all your management practices, all the things you're doing on the ground and make sure that you comply with their standard, okay?
Okay, where I'm going with this is how does this, how do you, in cooperation with the groups that do not want any type of cutting, any type of wood harvesting at all, just that they go natural and live it? You know, I believe that if you don't manage your forest, you kind of take the risk of major forest fires, number one, and spread the disease amongst the trees, number two, in which actually will damage your forest in the long run if you don't do proper forest management. Am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I remind councillor that we let him finish his presentation because our CIO has an engagement, we're on quite a tight schedule, please?
Just, I'll just ask, answer his other question about, he asked about interest groups or stakeholders that are interested in how the land's managed and I'll talk about it here in a sec. But there is a stakeholder advisory committee as part of that certification, it's made up of a whole host of different stakeholders, so they would include like the paddlers, the ATV years, contractors, NGOs, so like the Mersey Tobyattic Research Institute, there's a whole host, there's 20 of them, there's actually four or five municipalities that have members on there where we do a lot of active operations. And they review all their operating plans and we have quarterly meetings with them and they bring up relevant topics that they want to have talked about or have research presented on like water quality, wildlife habitat and different things. So that's really the avenue that we use to engage those groups that have interest in how the land's managed, all right? But in terms of provincial context, we represent between 7 and 8% of the forest wood fiber that's harvested in Nova Scotia annually. We operate on about 12% of the total forested area and last year, we accounted for about 11% of the shareholders' mills' wood supply. So a significant portion of their wood supply, some of the mills it was a little bit lower because of where they're located and their allocation and some of the mills that, you know, there's mills here in Digby County where we represented 30 to 40% of their wood supply last year and have historically from these lands. So back when the lands were purchased, the government undertook a public consultation process where they went around and had open town hall meetings and took written submissions as to how the land should be managed or divided up or what should happen. And they basically designated four different land use types in Western Nova Scotia. They designated, and that's broken there on the table by percentage of what the main primarily management objective of each one of those areas is, and they're not all in one spot, they're spread across the landscape from Halifax to Yarmouth. We have resource management areas where the primary goal is economic, basically growing sawlogs for defeat sawmills. You have biodiversity-rich landscapes where the primary objective is an environmental management regime with very specific environmental and wildlife targets. Then there's designated multiple values where the primary goal of the management regime is recreation and social values, so camping. These areas are heavily used by people who go fishing and ATVing, they're located close to some communities that have historically used them that way and that's their primary goal. And then also, again, about 40% of the remaining area was designated either for parks or protected or two MFI or MiGMA forestry initiatives, one in Digby County and one in Hans County in St. Croix, and they're actively managed by that community, those communities. So there's a map, when you asked earlier about the, I only showed earlier just Yarmouth County, but there's where they're spread across the landscape. So the orange that you see on the map is where the Parks and Protected areas are located. The big block you mentioned earlier, right in dead center, spread from Annapolis, Queens, Shelburne, Yarmouth and Digby is the, is the Tobyattic and Kijim Kuchik National Park, okay? And that area has been increased since then because of lands purchased primarily from J.D. Irving in Digby County has been added to that, added to that. The purple, the dark purple you see there is the Midway Community Forest Co-op based in Caladonia. The green are the lands that we would operate on and the two brown areas, those are the two MFI lands that I spoke of earlier. Again, one is in St. Croix in the former Bowwater Mersey lands and one is in Bear, just outside of Bear River, on the former J.D. Irving lands that were purchased by the province. So just, so we touched base a little bit, so the primary consultation process or stakeholder engagement as the certification bodies or people like to talk about, there's, all of our operating plans are reviewed by the Assembly Chiefs of the MiGMA Nova Scotia on an annual basis. We have the Western Region Stakeholder Interaction Committee, it's made up of 20 different members that basically have an interest in how the land's managed, either through a political lens because they're councillors, that their constituents have a long-term history of using the lands for primarily recreation, or they're people like the Queens County Fishing Game or the paddlers in Nova Scotia or the Research Institute, Mersey Tobyattic Research Institute, have very specific wildlife or environmental goals that they want to have input into and how the land's managed and what occurs on it. So again, we meet quarterly and they have, they have quite a bit of say in what happens where, when and why, so. And then on top of that, for in terms of public engagement, direct public, there's a public web viewer where all our operation plans are posted and there's a 60-day commenting period for people, general public to make comments on all our operating plans, which is actually quite active. The first year, just in my region, we had over 4,000 comments from public members on our operating plan, so it's died down a little bit, like I think the novelty wore off a little bit after the first year, but the first year was very, very active. So people always ask about sustainability, so I put it in there. Today, DNR looks after pretty much everything except for the one-year operating plans. Because we only operate on a short-term license today, they look after a five-year, 25-year and 100-year management plan and they basically roll out a plan and say, here you go to the ground and implement it. That's how it works today. In the future, if you were to look at a Port Hoxton Paper type arrangement, they would be responsible for the, pretty much all the buckets on that page and then DNR would audit and approve it, is how those long-term agreements work. But today, Westfor operations were basically, we carry out the annual operating plan, that's what we do. So we do face some industry challenges here in Western Nova Scotia. There's shrinking local demand, I mean, in the last 15 years, we've gone from 34 to 12 sawmills in the province. The overall forest activity or the level of harvest in the province has gone from 7.5 million cubic meters to 3.7, so it's about 50 to 60% of what it was in 2006 and there's no region that's felt that more than in the Western Five Counties, I call it, from Annapolis around to Queens County, primarily with the closure, the anchor of that industry, which was the paper mill in Liverpool and the sawmill in Oak Hill. I used to work at the one in Waymouth for two years and that one closed while I was there as well, so get a little bit of a taste of it. One of the big issues, and you spoke of it earlier, is the perception of our industry, it's cutting, just cutting, laying waste of the landscape versus actual forest management. It's a hard one to sometimes overcome, especially in the social media age, but I think it's something you have to continue to work at. We have a forest out there that today that isn't being utilized to its capacity for both environmental, economic concerns, so the only way you can fix that is to actively manage it, so. We also have a lot of forest that has been devastated by a bunch of natural disturbance like fire, insect, especially here in Western Nova Scotia, and it's how do you deal with that forest without, and given its current condition, and you may or may not have market for the tree, right? So you have to do something with it, but a red pine tree that has been hit with this arachnus doesn't have a whole lot of value in the marketplace, but you have to manage your forest around that. And then we have a very fragmented land base. Nova Scotia is, we've got the highest amount of private land ownership and varied land ownership in Canada and sometimes it makes it difficult to conduct forest operations when you're trying to manage things at a much larger scale than just an individual woodlot or an individual area because animals and in the environment and even people don't necessarily recognize a blaze line in the woods and change their activities based on that. So that makes, sometimes makes it challenging. So again, I spoke of earlier, in Western Nova Scotia, we have a major problem, we do have some remaining sawmills that are doing quite well, but we have a major hole in our marketplace or in forest management for a lot of the products that come out of our forests that aren't a sawlog and makes up a big part of our forest in Western Nova Scotia, whether that's, you know, the other 90% of a hardwood tree that doesn't make a hardwood sawlog or it's the top of a spruce tree that only makes essentially pulpwood or biomass. Really, we don't have an industry down here that can use that wood today. We do have lots of opportunities though. We can grow demand for our products, I mean, we're only utilizing about 20% of the annual allowable cuts or the, what's growing in the forest today in Western Nova Scotia, it's an underutilized resource. We're close to the biggest consumer market in the world, right here in the eastern seaboard of the US, not very far away at all. And one, you know, it's one thing that we do have is we have a lot of diversity and, you know, people talk about it a lot, but we have a lot of different tree species in our forest and because of, we have a large diverse forest industry that you wouldn't necessarily find in a lot of the places in Canada. We have hardwood, we have pine, we have spruce for sawlogs, we have hemlock and if you go across Canada, there's not very many places other than Nova Scotia where you have that diversity of forest and forest products businesses. Typically, there are one or two shop forests, you've got either softwood or hardwood and of those components, it's one or two things, so we're very lucky to have that diversity, which makes us, I think is an advantage for us, so. I think that was my last slide of the presentation, I'm at 11 o'clock, so. Any more questions, I would feel free to answer.
All right, I don't know whose mic come on first.
I'll be brief. If you could send us a list of things, because obviously there's a lot of, I'll call it biomass, but there's a lot of cut that could happen under the existing regulations and so forth. So if you could send us a list of things that we may do as a municipality to, we've got an economic development officer, for instance, we have limited legislative abilities, but if you could send us perhaps some ideas around how we might help the forest industry because obviously Yarmouth County has had, you know, a lot of employment in the forestry sector and still does have employment in the forest sector, so we'd like to see that grow for, to grow our economy and if you could send us along some ideas, some things we may do, we'd be very appreciative of that.
Just on that note, councillor Cunningham, I did make probably a two and a half hour presentation, we had a lot of discussion about it with the Western REN here a couple months ago as well, so. And we've had, I've had further discussions about a couple of projects that are undergoing in Digby that would drive, would make a big impact in the forest industry in that county, so. But I can more than well, I'm going to share some information with you, okay?
Thank you, Trevor. Councillor question?
Yes, I had to bite my tongue a lot of times through this presentation because there's, this, our forest industry is so important down here and you certainly highlighted about the varieties of lumber that we're able to have and we're not taking advantage of that under proper forest management. I had tons of questions to ask and I think it's very important, very important for the public to know how important our forest industry is and I really can't stress that enough. And I thank you very much for this presentation, I wished we had longer to talk, I had lots of questions, thank you.
I've had some of these meetings that they drag on all evening for that very reason, so.
I'll keep them under control. Warden Anthony?
Thank you very much, only a couple of quick questions. I didn't have the opportunity, about a year or so ago, they had a big conference, I believe in Pictou or whatever, pertaining to the forest industry and so on. I didn't get the opportunity to go to that, our Director of Finance did and I wish she'd been here today because there'd be some questions. The concern that I had that was brought to me was on Crownland, you have. The concern that I had that was brought to me was on crown land, you have usually a budding crown land where it's being cut is private ownership. And as crown land, you folks or the industry cut straight up to the private woodlot owner's line, but just fine, you're allowed to do that. But within the next couple of years, that private woodlot owner has lost maybe 10, 20 feet of wood on his property because of windfall, it falls over. And they were pushing really hard, or they would like that on crown land, you had to leave, I'll say like a 20-foot abutment before you got, or before you came to the private woodlot owner. Not that you can answer that or say that's going to be done, but that was a concern. The other concern that I had was when you said about constructing roads and so on, I'd really like to know, do you have to build them to everybody else's standards for a forestry road going across a broad stream or close to a lake, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Do you have to adhere to those regulations everybody else does?
So in terms of, I'll answer that in two parts. The one against the private boundary, we, as an organization and operating on DNR, were to follow regulation. And whatever the prescription is, whether it's a partial cut or a clear cut, we do operate right up to the edge of a boundary line. And it's vice versa the other way. If you're a private woodlot owner cutting up against crown, it's same thing. There's certain regulations you have to leave around line trees and different things. But yes, we do operate right up to, up to the edges of people's property. Now, in certain circumstances, people like that or want that, in certain circumstances they don't. All right? We don't operate against a lot of private boundaries. I'd say maybe, you know, we operate, we did probably 200-plus harvest operations last year, maybe less than 20 of them. I'm just estimating here, come up against private boundaries. A lot of times, actually in, especially in Queens County and Annapolis County, the private boundary line on the other side's already been cut. Down here in Yarmouth County, that's not the case because there hasn't been nearly as much forest activity. So in this county, I would say it's quite prevalent that if we did operate up against private boundary, you're right, it would be standing timber on the other side. And no, we do not actively leave a buffer on our forest operations. The second point you made was about water course crossings. So forestry-grade roads, DNR province has a specification of three different classifications of roads on, for forester use, all right? So that would primarily apply to the surface and the width, okay? So how wide are you required to build the road and how deep the road is and how, what type of surface material you have to leave it in? So on our approvals, DNR approves all our operating plans, they would say this is a class three road, class two road, class one road, and each one of those comes with a different requirement. When it comes to stream crossings, we are governed by a different organization, same, still the provincial government, but the Department of Environment, okay? So on our stream crossings, we have to abide by Department of Environment, Water Course Installers Guidelines, which is applicable whether you're Department of Transportation, private landowner building a road or putting in a stream crossing, or operating on crown land. So those are the guidelines that we adhere to. All right?
If I may, Mr. Chair, one other quick question then. If there's a piece of crown land and the only way right now to get to it would be on a private road, and if the province wanted West Fore, if you were managing that piece to cut that, do you have to do any improvement or would you do any improvements to the private road that passes or goes by the crown land?
So to answer that, there's a couple situations where that would come up. There's first one, sometimes the crown has a deeded right-of-way access to the private landowner, okay? In those circumstances, then I'm governed the same way we would if we were working on crown land and we would have to maintain. And typically, we like to be good neighbors, we typically leave the road in better shape than we started with, all right? And that's, especially in that circumstance. Then the other circumstance would be that the crown didn't have a right-of-way, so there's no legal access to their piece of property. In those circumstances, my organization would typically meet with the landowner and come up with a road use agreement, okay? So that would be directly between the landowner and West Fore. It wouldn't involve the crown. And what would happen there is sometimes we give financial compensation, sometimes we deliver a load of firewood, sometimes we fix the road up to a standard, we grade the guy's camper. I could give you all kinds of different ways that we obtain access through our road use agreement, but there's really two types. One is a deeded right-of-way, which is then we fall under whatever the government road that we, road regulations that we have to abide by. If it's a road use agreement, it's whatever my organization and that landowner agree to for the use of the road. Okay? Thank you.
Hearing none, thank you very much for your presentation. I just spoke to CAO, she has your contact information and will possibly get in, get in contact with you for a follow-up. And one thing I'd like to mention that, that really something that's true, true to my heart is making sure that we actively manage our forests. I'm a private woodlot owner, I own about 600, 700 acres myself, that's all under active management. And it's hard to believe how the forest regenerates itself. Some of it's been clear cut, some of it's selectively trimmed, some we've taken out, some dead trees and stuff like that. It's amazing how the forest recovers, even in the clear cut areas, in just a matter of years. How something that can look so bare and torn up can change. And also planting and stuff like that, which I'm sure you do. And that's something I wanted to ask about planting. Do they still have money set aside to the mills and stuff where they replant in the clear cut areas?
Yes. So I didn't include it in here, but our silver, like we do the silviculture, so the planting and PCT. So this year, we're about 60% done my program at the end of last week. We planted about 800,000 trees, all right? So it's not to the level that J.D. Irving and Bowwater were planting. Those organizations are probably planting, you know, five, six million trees each. But the crown's taken a different management approach than they did. What, with those organizations, typically they replanted spruce and pine. On most of their sites, they wanted them 100% stocked and they wanted the good seedlings on the ground. The crown, we do a different approach. We go in and we do what's called a regeneration assessment on our cut over. So we're about 55% of our stands, we actually clear cut. About 55% of the work we've done in two and a half years. And we assess after three years, is the regen on the ground, the natural regen acceptable? If it is, we don't plant the site. All right? If it's under 60%, we fill plant it. So we would just go through and rather than plant like a typical industry plantation where you'd be planting 2,200, 2,400 trees a hectare, we, you know, our typical flower plants are about 800 to 900. So the planters go through, we got lines and then they only put a tree where there isn't one already, basically what happens. So this year, we're going to plant 800,000 trees. We're going to PCT or thin almost 2 million acres in Western Nova Scotia, so about 810 hectares, so about 2 million acres of PCT is what we'll do. And we're going to site prep, so getting the ground ready for planting for next year, we're going to do about 500 acres of site prep.
So do you do any replanting in any other species other than red spruce or pine?
Yeah, so we do.
Do you do black or?
So we do, we do black spruce, white spruce, red spruce, white pine, and we do a little bit of hemlock. All right? And primarily what, where we're planting trees are typically on, you know, the sites that we have a hard job getting tree vegetation back primarily because of the arachnias, the bushes that are up around here, like we call it the, I call it the Queen Shelburne ground down there, got a lot of woody vegetation, lambkill and different things. And we have a real struggle getting young trees to grow underneath. Those are the sites that don't have really good advanced regeneration and we end up planting a lot of them. And in those sites, because of where they're at, they're, it's spruce pine country and that's why we end up planting a lot of black spruce and pines because that's what grows well there. Typically, if we're doing our job right, the red spruce, we can get it to come in naturally because it's growing. It's typically on better sites that regenerate naturally better, so.
Yeah, there's nothing better in my opinion than natural regen, if it will happen.
Yeah.
Lauren, one quick question and then we're going to have to move on.
You're talking about you're planting your white pines.
Yes.
You, you obviously have trouble with the pine shoot moth also to you with that and planting them? How do you guys handle that? Just let it go until it pushes out and goes up?
So there's some different management techniques around pine. We do plant some pine, but predominantly what we like to do is typically your PCT in your trees or thinning them at the first stage, it was not a commercial harvest, for your other softwoods between two and three meters tall. And what we like to do with pine is we like to let them get to four to five. And if you can get them in that young forest up a little bit taller, typically it takes the opportunity for those trees to be not as impacted as if they would have, would have been if you would have spaced them or given them a lot of space when they were a little bit younger. So that's number one. And two, we do a lot of pine shelter woods or seed tree cuts where we leave pine residual overstory in our pine stands and that seems to have a positive impact in the amount of that that happens in your, in your trees. Not perfect by no means, but it is one way.
So are you suggesting that the white pine of probably a five-foot height or better is not acceptable to the pine shoot moth as?
It's more susceptible than a taller, when I'm talking that's meters, all right? So like a, I'd say a six to 10 foot is a little bit young to be thinning or is more susceptible to getting the pine and that's when they start to get the bushiness to them. I call them wolf trees, but that's, that's when they really get hit, not when they get up in the 20-foot tall range.
So there's, there's still quite a process that you have to go through before you actually get a white pine that's going to be.
Yes. Yeah, the thicker you can grow them, the younger, at a younger age, the less likely they are that you're going to get. That in it, the other thing too is because there's more stems on the stand, on the acre, the more likelihood, if you still get 20% of your trees damaged, well then you can, you're able to remove them. 20% of 4,000 trees is a lot, more than 20% of only 1,500, right? So it gives you the opportunity to select the better, the one that wasn't damaged.
Is there any natural predator for pine shoot moth?
Nothing I'm aware of. I'm not a entomologist.
I don't know, I just wanted you to.
No, I don't know.
Any, any questions to stop? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys.
Mr. Warden, since you're, the next item on the agenda is investment in high-speed internet, maybe, I'll hold the chair until that, until that's finished.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying that.
Wasn't paying attention. Yeah, the next item, number five, business arising, number one was investing in high-speed internet and your name's attached to it, so.
And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm all downstairs, I have a little bit of a problem with that.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, you can push, turn and you turn yourself on and off, I believe.
So I think probably Mr. Blynn gave us the update on that, so we don't have official word that the CTI application was either successful or unsuccessful. I think you've heard what some of the plan is for bridging the gap in rural internet for now. The team at the Western REN is working on a Plan B, received some information from Angelique and her team this week. Basically, it hovers around an inter-ministerial agreement to create a body corporate to move forward with application. I will say that early on, CTI awards seem to be in, in one of two types of proposals. One where there was a strong presence of First Nation participation and the other where there was a strong presence of a private sector service provider, so a Bell, a Shaw, an East Link. And I would say that's probably what made our application weak. So that's kind of where it stands right now. There's no news, but there is a Plan B in the works to come before the councils.
Thank you very much. 5.2 is Mariner Centre board members and I believe we were asking for some information on that. We do have one vacancy, I believe. Go ahead.
So according to the bylaws at the Mariner Centre, each participating body should have three non-elected directors at the board level. And so our directors representing the district of Yarmouth are Harold Richardson, appointed in 2008, Adam Churchill, appointed in 2012, and Ronnie Jackard, appointed in 2012. So there's an individual named Mike Randall, who happens to be the chair, who is, he's a MODI member, but he doesn't represent MODI. So he's actually there representing the town of Yarmouth. He lives in the district, but his business is in the town, right? So we have three seats to fill and our seats are full. There's been no indication from Mr. Richardson of whether or not he's stepping down. We have no official notice on that. Again, we have no official notice on that. What will happen when any of our representatives step down, the management committee at the Mariner Centre will work with the CAO for the unit that that person was representing and make a nomination to the board. Any person who represents this council on that board is there at the pleasure of this council. So there's a mechanism in place for you to engage with those three individuals and talk about expectation management and make sure you're on the same page in terms of what the job entails and what you'd like to see happen.
Is there any questions or discussion? Well, I, the only issue I don't, we have three reps and that's what we're allowed, three non-elected representatives. And you said there's basically four, there was Harold, Adam, and Mike and the other person?
So Mike represents the town, he lives in the district, but he's representing the town. So yeah, we have Ronnie, Adam, Harold.
Yeah, so we have those three. And Adam and Ronnie have been there since 2012 and Harold's been there a little bit longer than that.
2008.
Yeah. Well, it's a wish, it's just to wait and see if, when Harold steps down or would you like to, do you want to put out a request if anybody wishes to put an application in for her to sit on the, on the Mariner's Board or? Go ahead, councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I haven't got the, in front of me, there's, there's, I'm not just certain how members are, we've got members in the, my understanding is we have members sitting on the board that were duly appointed and so forth. I'm not understanding that there's any need or necessity or any mechanism to replace those members at this point, so if there's not, I don't really know why it's on the agenda and why we're talking about replacing somebody unless there's a vacancy or unless there's a mechanism that's enforced to, to have a vacancy occur. So maybe I could have some clarification. I'm not certain what it is we're being asked to do. All I know is from the conversation here is that we have sitting members that have been duly appointed and that's it. If there's no vacancy, I don't know why we would advertise or, can I get some clarity around that?
Excuse me, I think that because Mr. Richardson's personal issues and so on with his health and so on, felt that he may be stepping down and I think that's for councillor Christian. And because Mr. Richardson has stepped away from the EMO as chairman of the EMO, the coordinator of EMO, so I thought there may be, didn't want to wait until the possibility, if we wanted to put out a request, anybody wanted to show interest in the Mariner's Board, they do it now so that if and when he did, we'd have somebody to go back onto the board. That's what we were looking at. Go ahead.
Yeah, it seems reasonable to me that we wouldn't do that, that we wouldn't do that until such time as we know there's a vacancy, so if there's, and I don't want to get talking, I don't want to really talk about individual members' help, run on other boards, committees here in this session. Perhaps that's something we could ask staff to look at in a confidential matter and if there's a necessity for us to act on the, on the membership, then we will at some point in the future, so those are my comments.
Hearing nothing further, we'll move on to 5.3, loss of tax exemption from the May 23rd regular council meeting. And I believe that, that was councillor, that was councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Correct, thank you. Yes, we had had a discussion and discussed, maybe the timing wasn't perfect at that time. But anyway, what I wanted to bring forth is the fact that there, the federal government is going to change our, the tax exemption on the councillor's income.
And what I was going to suggest is maybe that we send a letter to FCM to ask them to continue their discussions with the federal government to look at not losing that tax exemption because that's going to have an impact across Canada on the pay of councillors. And my understanding is that there are other provinces who also fall under the tax exemption policy. So I'm just looking for a letter of support at this point to FCM to continue their negotiations with the federal government.
Is there any questions or? Go ahead, councillor, sorry. I guess councillor Durkey, you have to turn your mic off so I can.
Right.
Right, um, I, I, I think this, the issue this brings up is, is I guess at some point in the future, if the federal government does, uh, do this through the, through their Canadian Canada Revenue Agency, then I guess there'd be a conversation about compensation, all this type of thing, municipalities, um, across, uh, Nova Scotia and, and across Canada. So having said this, it's really a federal issue, so I, I would, uh, I would certainly have that, because obviously our federal members responsible for the, for, for the change. They're the governing body at this point, they're in power. So I would suggest if we write that letter, I don't have any issue with that, having, um, FCM continue to advocate, I think they are already. But I think it would be most useful to copy our MP and, uh, I think generally there's, uh, consensus that there's displeasure about that change and that we make that known to our, our Member Parliament.
Go ahead.
I would absolutely agree that we should, um, have our local MP involved. What I don't want to happen is, um, has this change have any impact on our local municipal taxpayers?
Was there any further question? This would be a recommendation then that Counselor Cunningham, that you're making to move forward?
So I would like to make a motion that.
Can't make a motion, just a recommendation to go there.
Yes, a recommendation, that's right. It's, uh, not a regular meeting, yes. To, to write a letter, um, that the FCM continue to advocate on our behalf and a copy of that be forwarded to our MP.
A question and, uh, because Counselor Cunningham did mention, uh, to copy that to our MP, uh, I'm just wondering if it would not be, uh, to our advantage to copy all of the MPs in the provinces, in our provinces? And so on, that, that our MP has possibly the support and so on, because it is basically a liberal MPs. So that, is that, would you add that, want that added to your?
Absolutely, that's an excellent suggestion, thank you.
That's a recommendation to go forward, okay, thank you. Item 5.4, meeting date for Science Committee, Staff Members, what is the?
So it's my understanding that council would like to revisit that mechanism for dealing with signs around the municipality. So if that is, um, the consensus of council, I'll work with the staff on that project and we'll convene a meeting and see where we're at, see what the action items are and go forward from there for recommendations to council.
Item number six, Business, you all had it in, in your package, the letter from the municipality of Digby, Letter of Support for Completion of Highway 101, Digby to Waymouth. What would be your wishes, uh, on that? Is there any? Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, same as Digby, we're in, we're in this end of the province. Just happens to be, this highway just happens to be in their jurisdiction, but it serves our residents, so I, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward that we, we'd, uh, offer our support for their, uh, for their letter. So I, I'd, I'd make a suggestion, if we can gain consensus, that we, we support the letter as, as requested.
Okay, that would be a recommendation. Was there any discussion? You have any further discussion? You're not okay, fine, yep. 6.2, fencing around man-made ponds. Counselor Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, it was brought to my attention that there was, uh, over in Westwood Village, which is off the Dayton Road, that there is a, um, a house built out there and they built two man-made ponds that are, for what reason, I'm not sure of, and I guess it's really none of my business right now. But it's been brought to the concerns from some of the other residents, the people that live in that area, that there's 17 children in that area that's in the vicinity of them ponds and they're, they're afraid of, of, well, of course, something happening to those children, so, um, I, uh, under request, I, I talked to Roger about any bylaws that, uh, dealt with something like that, and he said there wasn't. So, uh, saying this, I went back to the, to the property owners who, that were concerned about those man-made ponds and explained to them that there was no, no such bylaws. And, uh, they were, you know, naturally disappointed that there's something that couldn't be done. But I'm just wondering, um, the explanation that Roger gave to me is no different to somebody building a house on a lake, you know, or a river, or the ocean, or whatever. However, those are natural occurrences, whereas a man-made pond is something that is man-made. So I'm just wondering if it's something that we should look at or, or not, that's, uh, and I'm just following up with some, some residents' concerns, so I'm looking for some direction on what we should do there.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I personally have no appetite to pursue this, uh, request. There, there's lots of man-made ponds and there can be debate of what's actually man-made and what's been modified and stuff like that. I, I, growing up, I, I, I know that that was not a concern and I don't believe it would be concern of the rev- residents that I represent, however, I cannot speak for the rest of you, but I, I have no appetite to pursue that concern.
Counselor Cunningham?
I'm, I like Counselor, the other Counselor Cunningham. I, 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 I tend to agree. I, I hear the concern. I had young children a few years ago. I happened to live on a lake and it was always a concern of mine, we were concerned. But, but at the end of the day, it is private property, so, you know, if, if, and I had a dock and have children on the dock. So I, I mean, those are private property concerns in my mind. I, I, and I, I don't, I mean, there are a million situations, as Counselor Cunningham alluded to, around, around, around the county where those, either those ponds exist naturally or man-made or they're lakes or whatever. But I, I, I would encourage folks in their communities to, to discuss that amongst themselves and try to, uh, you know, certainly keep top of mind the safety of students, of students, of, uh, of children, especially young children. And, uh, those are, those, in, in my mind, I hear the concern. But I think, I think those are private matters we dealt with by private landowners and we simply don't own, own the land. If it were, if it were property of ours, if we had a lake or, or a pond, that's a different consideration. We may choose to fence those. But, uh, again, I, I would agree with Counselor Cunningham, that's some, something that we wouldn't explore.
Counselor Cushing? I'm sorry, go ahead, okay.
All right, well, that's, I, I think I've got some, uh, some, uh, clear understanding of what's council's, uh, decision on something like this, but I just wanted to bring to my fellow councilors that there was a concern out there from within my district and, and I've done this and, uh, thank you very much for your input.
6.3, District Planning Commission, dissolution and interim plan, CAO?
So as council, um, is quite likely aware, we have a retirement that's impacting the delivery of that service, um, which we do jointly with the municipality of Argyle. On recommendation of, uh, Mr. Fulton, who's retiring, um, would like to seek, um, a recommendation from Committee the Whole to Council to direct staff to seek contract services for planning professionals. So I've interacted with my counterparts, um, from Shelburne around to Digby and where there's no current full-time planner on staff, they're using contract services. And so I'll be asking for a recommendation Committee the Whole to Council to direct staff to go ahead and pursue engaging somebody through our procurement process.
Deputy Warden?
I'll, I'll make that recommendation.
Was there any further discussion? Anybody had any? You were the Chair DPC, were you not? Yeah, you weren't there very long, were you? Go ahead.
I do have one question, I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to, to CAO, Victoria. Uh, I'm unsure on, on how contracted services would work with, with any planning issues and, and things like that. So maybe a little education piece on, on, on how the, I know the municipality of Barrington had, had stepped away from the, DPC, from planning, yeah, the district planning. And I'm kinda curious as to how that would work, like say if we have a rezoning request come through the PAC, does that go only through Roger, our own municipal staff then? Or does that work through the contracted services? I knew, I do know that we would have to contract out, like say if we went over, uh, another Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw Review, which is not due, I believe, for another seven years, but, but it eventually will come. I'm just kinda curious on, on how that would impact our day-to-day workings in our development office, because I do know that Brad does a lot of research and background work in regards to, uh, what pin number it is, where it's located next to, uh, where all the other zoning is. And I'm just kinda curious how that would work. I'm not sure if that would be included in a RFP or?
So quite right, Deputy Warden. Um, the first step in the process will be for me to bring a recommendation to council on the scope of the requirement of services before we go to market. And there's different models across the province in terms of what would be asked of a contract planner. So that will be the first step in the process, which is why I'm asking for direction now, because, um, the current planner will be retiring in the fall, so it's gonna take time to go through this process, define the scope and then go to market and, and award the contract. So that's why I'm seeking direction now, because council's gonna have to evaluate some options I'm gonna present and decide which way they wanna go, because the scope can be narrow or the scope can be broad.
CTO, I'm kinda curious what actually, how much of our own development office does compared to what Brad does.
We can include that for your evaluation.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Counselor Cushing?
All right, I'll, I'll be very brief, but I think our CEO, our CAO is on the right track and I appreciate her efforts and, and, um, I think, uh, answered a lot of Counselor Deputy Warden Cunningham's, uh, concerns. And I think it's, it's something that's gonna take some time, like, 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 uh, our CEO mentioned that, uh, Brad will be retiring, I think it's in December, so it will take some time and, and I believe we have some time now to really to, uh, to look into it. I'm looking forward for the CAO to give us some information concerning this, so, thank you.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, I have a question, um, um, through the Warden to our CAO. So are we considering just contracting out this service as opposed to hiring a permanent staff person? Is that the, basically what we're looking at?
That, that's right, um, because the, the full-time equivalent position that exists was originally shared between four units. Originally Claire, Barrington, the District of Yarmouth and Argyle. Claire withdrew, Barrington withdrew, so the remaining two units have, to the Deputy Warden's point, we've, we've kept the FTE in place and we may have just used the extra capacity for things that are normally outside the scope of that particular position. So we'll, we'll look at that, but you're quite right, so a shared full-time position will become contract position and each unit will contract with whomever that unit chooses.
Thank you for the clarification.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Uh, I know we're, we're, we talked about partnerships with the neighboring municipalities. I'm kinda curious if the town, I do believe the town has their, their own planner. Uh, that would possibly be an avenue? I, I'm not sure. I don't know, but, but maybe that's something that we could possibly do very preliminary, just very preliminary, uh, discussions about, about what it would look like and how much it.
So, so that's right, it's about evaluating all the options and I just heard Counselor Durkey, um, use some language that is being considered. So Department of Municipal Affairs actively have staff looking at planning from a regional lens. And so when this council evaluates options to make a decision, that will be part of the information that will be brought forward for you to consider.
Perfect, thank you very much.
I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I believe that Claire just went through, uh, a review of their strategy and so on. And they had a, a private contractor come in and do that. They had public meetings and so on. And then it, then it was, uh, then they had, then it, then it was presented to council here, I wanna say maybe four, four months ago, maybe? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
Yeah, also if you remember, Mr. Chair, here about three, four years back, that there was a, a requirement to receive some of our gas tax funding, that we would have to do, uh, some environmental work, I think it was, or environmental study or environmental impact. But we had to hire out a, a contract to another company. I, I can't remember the name of the company, but, and what exactly the thing was. But in order to receive that gas tax funding, we had to do that, we had to contract that out. We couldn't use, or Brad was too plugged up to, to do that work, so we hired out a, a separate contractor.
Deputy Warden, that's your Integrated Sustainable Communities Plan.
Yeah.
Hearing nothing further, we'll move on to 6.4, the 2018 National Special Olympics Summer Games, myself. I, I sent that information out to you, staff done a little research and there was two, two athletes from our, uh, our area participating and so on. Uh, the, the email that I had received was from one of the organizers, Carl Chisholm, who used to be a, a mayor of, uh, I believe of Aniganish. And, uh, he was just putting it out there to all municipal units if they would be willing to support. And, uh, there was no request for any, uh, any amount, it was if municipal units. And I know in the past, when they had, uh, I'll say the Winter Special Olympics here, it's quite a few years ago, uh, that the municipality, uh, supported it in that respect. So I didn't know if this council wanted or would be willing to make a donation of a, whatever, a hundred bucks, 200, whatever. Anyway, I see the mics are all lit up. Counselor Cunningham?
Right, yeah, I, I would say that, um, because it's Special Olympics, it's a national event, it's being held in the province and, and we do have participants coming from municipality of Yarmouth. I, I'd make a recommendation that we, um, we, we donate $250 to the, to, to the cause. It's a, it's a small amount and I think it's, it, it, it respects the fact that it's taking place in Nova Scotia and supporting our athletes, but it doesn't produce a, an undue burden on our taxpayers either. So those are my recommendations and we can probably move that to, uh, to a regular council meeting. That, that's just a, a beginning point. I'll wait to hear from other folks as well.
Counselor Cushing?
Thank you. Um, I'm well aware of the, of the Special Olympics, 'cause our, I'm a member of our Knights of Columbus and we support the, the Special Olympics. We had a presentation from one of the members who are be participating in the games. And, uh, you know, I, I, I could be corrected on, on the financial burden upon each athlete, but I think it was around $2,000 they had to raise for them, each of them, to go away with. So of course our, our, our organization did support, and I think it's a very valid thing for us to do, is to, I'll follow up with Counselor Cunningham's recommendation of minimum of 250 elders. It's, it's well worth and the excitement they get out of it is, uh, is tremendous, whether any type of sport that, uh, any athlete participates in, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a good feeling. And, uh, so I, I think it's a very, something very, very important that we should, we should be supporting.
Counselor Allen? Why can't I turn you on?
I think it's a great. Then, um, I think Aniganish took it on.
Yes.
And I'm not sure when we held the Winter Olympics, did Aniganish actually donate money to? Like, to be hon- I guess where I'm going with, I'm more inclined to support the athletes that are from Yarmouth going there as opposed to the $250 going towards the event. Like, that, I, I'm not sure if Counselor Cunningham, if that's where you were going with it, but I, I'm more, I'm more inclined to say if we're going to do something that I, I think we have a contingent going from Yarmouth of a couple athletes, that a couple hundred, $250 maybe split between them or a couple hundred dollars each to help them with their travels to get there. I would be more inclined to do that as opposed to, I would assume when Aniganish, and I shouldn't assume, but when Aniganish undertook this undertake, undertook, took this undertaking to host this, that they knew what it was going to cost and. going to cost. And no different than if we were holding an event here, I don't think we would be asking Aniganish to help fund the, the event itself, so much as help fund their team to get here.
Yes.
And that would, that would be my inclination. I, I am more apt to support our athletes that are going that way. I, I, I know what it's like to raise money. And I think it's a great event for them. And I think we should definitely help them get there. That's what I would do.
Yeah. Thank you. I think it's Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was, I think Counselor Allen read my mind. I was approached by Gary Hudson here several times throughout the year about, and he, he asked for different things he was, whether he'd be selling tickets or stuff. And he, he told me the reason why he was raising money is to send some kids to the Special Olympics Summer Games. And I don't know if he did or didn't, but I asked him to send in the, a grant request to, to council. But I don't remember seeing one. And I'm along the lines of Counselor Allen. I would much rather see any money that we contribute to the special games go to our local athletes. And I've said that to Mr. Hudson myself. And I've bought a lot of his tickets, didn't win any of the prizes. But I, I think, I think that's a route that I'd be comfortable taking.
Counselor Cunningham?
I, I guess the, the suggestion I made is in response to the letter that's here.
Yes.
I, I don't disagree that, that supporting our local athletes is, is, is not at least important or more important. But the fact of the matter is, the request is, is not that in front of us. So the, the question is whether we're gonna support this ask or not. The, the fact that folks would may, may, would rather get, we haven't got the other ask from the athletes, right? I mean, that would come in separately. So that, that's how, I think that's how we need to frame it. So we're either gonna, we've gotta answer this letter. So we're either gonna support it. And, and I, I would agree, they are sort of stating in the letter that, yeah, they've taken this on. Really, the $250 is a nominal amount that's kind of just saying, thanks for hosting our athletes. And the money, and the money will go to support all the athletes, including ours. It's coming. I mean, there's costs on that side. So it, it's not like we're, I'm not, I'm not advocating for thousands of dollars. It would be really, so it's just kind of a, a show of support for our athletes that are coming from, from Yarmouth. If we wanna do something separately, then, for the individual athletes, then, then we, we could talk about that separately. And, and or they could send us a request for, for, for some support. So those would be my comments. So I'll, I'll stand by.
You're supporting the request.
I'm supporting the request for $250. And we can move that to, to the next, next regular scheduled council.
Go ahead.
What I can do in preparation for council is check with Frank to see if the request from the athletes went via the recreation program. It may have gone that way where the, where it's an athletic program. So I can check on that and provide information to go along with your council packages, so that you'll have the information you need to make a decision at council.
Yeah, my reasoning, I understand what Counselor Cunningham was saying. But with Counselor Daniel Allen and, and John Cunningham, I, I was, my intention was that $250 go to the athletes themselves. That's my, you know, I probably should have read the letter a little bit better. But, you know, I'd rather see it go to the individual athlete than to the organization. So, thank you.
Okay. Then, then in saying that, I guess, I won't call it the recommendation, but the thought is of this council is, you'd like to do $250, whether it goes to the athletes or to, to the hosting municipal unit. After staff brings back the information from recreation and so on, then we can make our decision. Now, the, the function is July 31st, our council meeting isn't until the 27th, is it? Is that our council meeting?
June.
Yeah, June. What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I was thinking, I'm rushing. I apologize.
I'm worried that it's.
Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
And, and, but I mean, in terms of governance, we've gotta answer this letter specifically, yea or nay. I've suggested $250. And that's what needs to go forward. If we wanna also support or not support the individual athletes, that's a separate question in my mind. So that would need to be brought separately. And if folks wanted to support the $250 request, but, and I'll make that a motion at the next council meeting. We can either do that or not, which is fine. And I, I see the, the rationale. Or we could support, depending on what, but again, we don't have a request from, and, and that may have gone through, through recreation, that support. So I guess, long, long story short, we've got a letter in front of us. So we as a council, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need to respond to the letter, yea or nay. I'm suggesting that we, we say yea in a small amount. The other issue is, staff can look into, but is a separable issue.
Yeah.
That will need to be done, dealt with separately by a separate motion.
Yes. Okay. Deputy Warden?
I don't know what it is. Everyone must be reading. My mind, where I'm a little tired today. But Counselor Cunningham is absolutely right. We have a request. We should move it forward, whether we vote yea or nay at the time. But it has to go forward to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. So I'll also make that recommendation, that we move it to our next regular council meeting and make a decision then.
Good. Okay. Fine. Thank you. Six point five, letter of thanks to Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Perry for the RCMP headquarters tour. I just wanna know if your thoughts was to write a letter of thanks to him for setting that up and so on. I believe those of us that were at that found it a very interesting session, a very interesting tour and so on. I, I think lunch was well-prepared and of high quality. So on. Go ahead. I'm trying to think here. Moving on.
Deputy Ward.
Deputy Warden, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move this forward to the regular council meeting. Because I'll say this much, I don't think we had enough time there. Because I was very interested on, on all aspects, everything from the dog to how they actually crack cell phones, to the, the evidence collection. It was amazing. That was the fastest four and a half hours I ever been to in my life. Because every aspect that they talked to us about was very interesting. And it was amazing to see how they actually catch the bad guys. And, and the, what really amazed me was, was how easy, or how easy they made it look, that they could break into your phone. That was totally disassembled there or even broken on, on the equipment. And as you all remember, years ago, or not years ago, it was only months ago, that an issue came up in the United States where they, where Apple would not give the, the codes on how to break into their phones. Well, someone's already figured that out.
Yeah.
That, that's old news.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's just a program that they have now that costs them quite a bit of money in a little $50 box. And they can get everything off your phone. It's amazing. So, yeah, I'm agreeing that we should move that forward.
And from your car computer, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, so it would be a recommendation, we send a, a letter? Okay. Recommend to staff. Thank you very much. Six point six, connections with academia, Counselor T Cunningham. Go ahead Counselor.
Right. Generally speaking, I just, just wanted to bring this to council's attention, that many organizations, many governmental organizations, private firms and so forth, do have successful organizations. And I think we're one of them. But I think we could do a better job in leveraging our, our university and community college partners to a greater extent. For instance, well, just, just today, we're talking about the, the business districts and, and the municipality. We, we may be able to leverage, like I'm thinking, as an example, some MPA masters, public administration or master business administration students, they're looking to do projects. Certainly, I think we could partner and get some good value from some of those, some of those institutions in terms of doing some research in, in, in the, in the community, in terms of, of moving the economic development file forward, environmental files forward. So when we, all this, all this to say is, when we've got a project, another lens that we could look through is the partnership lens. So, you know, if, if, if you're, if you're doing a consult with the business community, maybe very good value to, to hire short-term. Some of those MPA students, that type of thing, they may need a work term. Very capable folks. And I'm, and I'm, you know, there's Dalhousie, St. Mary's, all of the universities, you know, have programs, various programs that we may be able to leverage some of those students and our faculty to, to, to get better results around some of our projects. So that's a very generic, high-level conversation. But I think it's something that maybe council and staff need to turn attention to a little bit more. So, again, just, just a general comment, and something we may look at in the months and years to come.
Good. Thank you very much. Six point seven, email from NSFM Workshop, Workshop for Doctor Recruitment. When that first came out, it just had CAOs, wardens, and mayors. And then there was a revised notice that it was wardens, mayors, CAOs, and counselors. And that's being held this Monday from 10:00 to 3:30 at the Weston. There is a, a cost to do it. It's not, it's just a, just a very small cost and so on. The CA, the CAO wishes to attend. And I had planned, but if there was any counselor that wished to go, it's, there's been a big push on around the province. You hear about these other meetings that are putting, being put on by the, the health authority of, of Nova Scotia around the province and so on. I believe they had one in Bridgewater, but it, either it was last night or the night before, and so on. And didn't know if anybody else wished to attend, or what's the wishes? Go ahead Counselor Durkey.
So, Mr. Chair, are you attending that meeting? I think it's really important that one of us be at that meeting. And if you're unable to attend, then I would be certainly willing to go. But I have two, we have two meetings. We have a bylaw meeting that day, and I have another meeting. But I'd be prepared if we change those to go. If, but as long as we have one person, I think it's really important.
Well, I had planned. But I mean, if there's somebody else, and if, even if a third person, this, this affects a lot of our residents and so on. And it's good that the CAO wishes to go because they, one of our main, one of our main staff be attending, because it will be something that will be coming around and so on. And like I say, I, I thought myself. But if there was another counselor that wished to, okay, so it'll be myself and, and the CAO and so on, because registration is, is today. Okay. So on. Six point eight, land in the business park. I'm not sure whether that was.
All I can say is that June 22nd is the close for the call for proposals to do the land scrubbing piece. So we're moving ahead with that process. I'm not sure if there were other questions around that.
It's, it's, okay. Thank you very much. You say June 22nd? Okay, thank you. Six point nine, FCM Special Advocacy Fund. You had that in your package. I can't remember the exact, was it $420 a year and so on? And that is for a, a, a special fund for FCM to be able to lobby the, the federal government and so on?
I asked to have it put on the agenda. And it speaks partly to what Counselor Durkey raised earlier. In the ramp up to the federal election, the FCM is seeking additional support for their lobby and advocacy activities to the tune of $400 a year for a two-year commitment, including taxes, $920. And that will allow them to address those specific issues related to federal election. And the CRA movement on income tax regulations, whether it impacts business owners or counselors directly, that would be part of that activity. So I asked to bring it forward for a recommendation from Committee the Whole to Council.
What is the wishes to council? Go ahead Counselor.
I'd recommend that we move this to the regularly scheduled council meeting. I'm in support of it simply because it's such a big piece of what we do. I mean, we've got the gas tax funding because of FCM a number of years ago. And, and FCMs are really, we're, we're just one little voice. But if we can add to that huge voice across Canada, all the municipalities, I think we're being called on to, to do something. I think it's good value for the money. Because ultimately, we, we need to be able to, we need to be able to hear, have our municipal voice heard during, during the federal election. Really important stuff.
You wanna do, the, there was the one year and a two-year. What would you, you, two years? Okay. Well, that's the direction I wanted, eh, that, in that respect. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Six point 10, ferry terminal redevelopment project.
So staff is seeking a recommendation from Committee the Whole to Council.
Yes.
And our executive assistant sent suggested recommendation to council via email.
Yes, yes.
So I'm, I'm ready to receive direction via recommendation to council.
Yes.
I agree with much, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm prepared to move that forward to the regular council meeting with the recommendation provided by staff. We can, if there's any changes, I see maybe one wording change. But I don't, I can't pull it up right now for some whatever reason. But I recommend that we move that forward.
Counselor Allen?
I, I completely agree with John, with Counselor Cunningham. And I think, I see the wording, and, and maybe, maybe our executive assistant can help me with just, it says census of the committee of the whole, it to recommend. So is to recommend. Should be is to recommend? Okay.
Recommend.
Yeah.
There was a slight amendment to the wording that went out this morning in an email. And that corrected wording will be in your package for council. And we, we just added language around everything hinging on the approval of the provincial and federal government for the project.
Yes. Deputy Warden?
My, my only question would be, I'd like to see up to a maximum percentage that, that was suggested. But there was also a dollar figure. There, there was no dollar figure there. I'm a little uncomfortable with, with no top dollar figure, to tell you the, to be very honest. But if we get more information down the road, then I could be agreeable with that.
Counselor Cunningham?
I, I think that ultimately, I, I hear Counselor Cunningham's concern. I think, and the CAO can clarify this. But I think that concern's covered off by, this is to proceed with an application. We would need to approve the expenditure at the end of the day anyway. So that would protect us from a, an exorbitant amount. So, and, and I, I agree. I think it's a, a well-worded motion that we can debate at the upcoming regularly scheduled council meeting. And I think it's a really good thing, because it projects our support of the ferry terminal in a fair and measured way in collaboration with our partners. So I think it sends a strong message that, that we're behind supporting the ferry service through improvements to the terminal. And I'm, I'm pleased with that. I'd certainly like to see the federal government picking up a hundred percent of the tab. Don't get me wrong. But this is, this is, these are the cards we're being dealt. And I think it's important for us to, given, that's, that's the way forward. I think it's important for us to support that. And it seems like a, a reasonable and measured way to, to support the, the terminal.
Okay. So that direction. Okay, thank you. Six point 11, calming signs, Counselor Cushing. Go ahead.
Yes. I pushed this matter when I first became a counselor. And I believe last fall, that we purchased one of the calming signs. I'm just wondering, when are they gonna be installed? And where are they gonna be installed? I think, I think it's a very important piece of equipment that we have. We can gather a lot of information on it. And my main reason for such a request was to, I know like on Highway 304, too, from, from Milton Highlands down to the Cape for Shu Lighthouse, it's a long stretch of area there. And vehicles do seem to. a long stretch of area there, and vehicles do seem to speed along there, there's a lot of truck traffic along there, and I think it's about three years ago, we had a, a young man who lost his life on, on that, on that section of highway, and perhaps the calming sign would have made a difference, maybe not, we don't know, but I do know from my, from my past experience, living in that district all my life, I can remember years ago, another, another person lost his life there, and saying that, also on our main shore road from Milton Highlands North, is another area where the traffic seems to be quite, move quite fast, and this has been probably, I'm guessing, five or six years, maybe, at least five or six years ago, time goes by so fast, there was a life lost there because of, of lack of place to walk, number one, but also for speed, so, so I think it's very important that we get these, these calming signs up and running, and to gather some information off it, off them, and I'd like to see, have some type of timeline that we can see them in place, here we are in the middle of June, and we don't know where we're going yet with them, so, I'd like to see that expedited.
Counselor Cushing, that agenda item is on the bylaw policy agenda, so Counselor Durkey is chairing that meeting, and she entertained discussion around that at the last meeting, and she had it added to the agenda for this next meeting.
Okay.
To develop a, a strategic process for where to put them, how long to put them, who do we need permission from, all of those issues to be dealt with, so we can create a program.
Okay. Good. Okay. Was there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to 6.12, Waste Cans, Counselor Cushing?
Yes, again, I, I spoke with our previous CAO about this issue with some garbage receptacles placed down in, in Yarmouth Bar where the monument is, and also in the Falls Harbor area for, for placing garbage. I'm very fortunate to have some several volunteers in, in my district who pretty much on a regular basis, basis travel, walk the roads from, from Cape for Shu, from the lighthouse to, to the Milton Highlands Corner, gathering, gathering waste, and they put the garbage bags to the side of the road, and our local John Duffus, Duffus Removeall, when they go by through, they, they, they pick it up, so it's very good, but however, instead of having, there's a, a large volume of debris that is picked up in that Yarmouth Bar, Cape for Shu area, and I'd like to have, as I talked to our previous CAO about this, about putting a couple of garbage receptacles there, where these volunteers could put the waste, and on regular pickup, the waste man, the waste collectors would, would stop and pick it up, so, I will check with, with Duffus Removeall, just to make sure that I, I'm understanding what they, what they have done previously, but I'd like to see that, that move forward, because it's a, it is, it is a tourist attraction down there, and we do have some volunteers who are very conscious about picking up litter, and I'd like to see us support them in, in this fashion if we could.
Deputy Warden?
I'd like to caution Counselor Cushing on that regards about putting out receptacles there, what I've found when the fire department out in Carlton did that, it turned out into a dumping zone. We also had one at our own personal business, and the same thing happened there, unless they're locked, have a lock cover, I would be very leery of putting something like that out there, and I'm glad the volunteers get out there, but I, unfortunately, in our today's society, they, they seem to think if they see a garbage receptacle, they seem to bring whatever's in their car, and they have a couple of bags in their back truck, and it might become overwhelming. I, I don't disagree that, and, that, that you should be possibly thinking about something like this, however, I do caution that it can turn into a nightmare very quickly, from my own experience. If you wish to proceed on that, absolutely, but I think maybe a trial basis, rather than permanent, would be, would it be a suggestion that I would have, because you never know.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Counselor Cushing, do you know if the cleanup is an ongoing basis, or if it's an event that's done once or twice a year?
Go ahead.
No, it's, it's an ongoing base, ongoing thing they do, right? I just seen her the other day walk, I'm, I'm picking up garbage.
Waste Check is a great partner for that kind of activity, they can assist those volunteers in those groups in terms of getting, getting the bags picked up after there's a cleanup, so, for example, if there was to be a sweep-through, and it was on, on or the day before, regular collection along there, then Waste Check could work with them to make sure it's collected, so they're a great partner for that, and I would recommend that those volunteers engage with Waste Check, to see if, if we can work something out there first, before we put receptacles out there.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate your, your comments, and I can appreciate Deputy Warden's comments too, but when I'm talking about waste receptacles, I'm not talking about the big red bins that you, that Duffus will pick up, like you see on the wharves and stuff, because at Yarmouth Bar, and Esteglen Point, and I'm sure at Pygny's Point, there's, there's some big, big bins that are there, this would be more or less a, for lack of better words, a, something like, and I'm just using these Koenigsegg and Delson or Bilzies wooden ones that you put garbage in, and that could be for a temporary basis, see how it works, but these volunteers are very active, and they're very dedicated to do this, and I think it's just another way to encourage them to keep it up, and show them that we're supporting, and I understand that, yes, no matter what happens, there's, there may be abuse, there may be vandalism done, but that shouldn't deter us from trying to help our, our neighbors look after, help us look after our community, that's my opinion.
I just wanted to bring up the fact that I had brought that up about the boat launch in Somerville, on the Mood Road, that there was a lot of litter, and the neighbors were picking it up, and I previously asked about putting the same type of receptacle in there with the recycling bin, the garbage bin, you know, and we've got, it never went anywhere. So, maybe it's something that we could be looking at for a trial basis, I, I think part of the issue, in all honesty, was who picks it up, whether, you know, Duffus actually goes in and picks it up, or somebody has to take care of it, and make sure it gets to roadside, so, it would be something we'd probably have to look a little bit more into.
Mr. Cushing, I'm pretty sure Duffus was picking it up, but I... I'm sorry. Deputy Warden?
There used to be a bin in front of the Carlton Fire Department, and there was, used to be one in front of our store that was actually compartmentized, like a separating thing. I do believe that Waste Check still has possession of those.
Could.
They should have, and they had 45-gallon drums, four drums per, per unit, so, if that's something that you're looking for, I think that's something we already have in the area that could possibly be used, and I would highly stress that you do this on a trial basis.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, am I hearing this right, and, and our CAO, please correct me if I'm, I'm out of bounds here, should I contact Waste Check and ask them if they would help out in this situation?
What I'm more than happy to do, I actually have a meeting with Gus Green and Amy Hilliard set for next week, just to kind of review Modi's file with them, and I'll add this to the agenda item, because what I'd like to see is, now that Counselor Allen has mentioned another area, I'd like to see more of a systematic lens on this issue around the District of Yarmouth, so have a discussion with Waste Check, find out where are the pain points around our district, and kind of go from there, and give council a broader view of what this issue represents.
Thumbs up.
Can I make a, when Counselor, the Deputy Warden stated about the big ones with the, you put the big, I'll say 45-gallon drum into, is that what you said, by your store? No, you don't want to go that route, because in the 45-gallon drum, we had them through the Industrial Commission on, on our wharves down in, in the town, and people used to bring their garbage and put into them. What you can get, and I believe, and I was going to suggest it to Counselor Cushing, I believe out by the EMO facility behind the fire hall, if you travel a little further out back, I believe the town had removed some of the bins, but they were, like you say, they're just the cubicle ones, that you can put the pop can in, and it's smaller, you want to try and keep something small, so that people will not, if they got the garbage bags in their trunk, they won't, but they'll put the Tim Hortons, cop, et cetera, into them, and the one I believe out behind the, the fire hall is, you won't move it, and you won't push it, it would have to be moved by a tractor and so on, it's quite heavy, and I was going to suggest that, I think we should start and look at that. I believe the municipality has to step up, and if you do have vandalism, so be it, eh, that goes on around the world, but if we don't encourage, we don't receive, and I think that's what we have to do.
Vandalism, like, all, it's, it's...
Oh, yeah, and, and that's why I say on the 25, or in the 45-gallon drum ones, they would do that. Go ahead, Counselor Cushing.
If I may, when I was, when I was employed by the town many years ago, that was one of the projects that I had, was, was looking up those, those separated metal receptacles sort of thing, right, where you could put whatever into them, and they were in control, however, they're good to have, however, what I would suggest, if we look at something similar to that, but with these volunteers who are picking up bags, that they can get access through a locking key to lift up the back and put the bag inside that they've collected, and the way you go, so, there's, there's ways that we can look at this, and, and they're still around, I mean, I've been, haven't been with the town since 2008, and I think I had made arrangements for them back in mid-'90s, and I think you see some of them are still around, so, they're tough, and they've been banged around and vandalized, but they're still there, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, we'll move forward with that. Is there any further business for the Committee the Whole? If not, adjourned. Thank you very much.